I can't be exaggerated by saying since I've been on this, sitting here, I've put more thought into this particular topic than anything else that's come before us. And, I mean, I'm sure everybody else was thinking and thinking about it, but you just said something I hadn't thought about, the usage, you know? Weekend as opposed to the, you know, during the week. I hadn't thought about that. Nobody brought it up tonight. Everybody spoke, you know? I think the point here is, there's a lot of things we haven't even thought about, that sitting down and discussing it, we're gonna, we're gonna think about things that haven't come across the table yet.
You know, it's a good table discussion, I, you know, we had, it's okay, it was this week. We had this discussion at plant, you know, so for, you know, for the three meetings we had, you know, we talked before, before December, you know, we discussed this and kind of, kind of vetted the whole process. Because a lot of, a lot of it was very new to me. The whole, the whole process of obtaining a firearm. People, people think you can come in and rent the gun. You can't touch a gun in New York State. It's a felony, I mean, without, without permits. You can't come in and just rent the gun and steal it and run out of it. You know, just some of these things are just being said at this stage.
But that's a common misconception, and it may be a misconception here by the council. I mean, I don't know that everybody knows that.
Yeah, I mean, New York State is a very, very restrictive state. It's the second, it's the second toughest gun laws in the country. Maybe, maybe tied for first, so. There, there are a lot of things that are, that are in place that don't allow, you know, people to, to do what people are suggesting they might be able to in a, in a facility like this. Including, including the, you know, the environmental concerns, the noise, the light, and all those things. They're all regulated, highly, highly regulated, and very closely regulated on top of it, so. You know, there's a lot of, a lot of the, a lot of the process, like I said, has already been, has been discussed. I'm happy to do it again, however you want to do it. You know, if you want to do it in small groups, large groups, when we stand up for two hours, and put it together.
Randy?
Well, Johnson, speaking of your point, I think there's actually two questions here. One is the question of public safety, which relates to the law. And whatever the cause is, i.e. the idea of putting in business, we're into something different, and we're talking about the law. And so that's what, I think, needs to go back to committee. We really need to look at that. Then there's a second question of whether we want this business in this place. And I think that's something separate. And the problem, I think, in a lot of ways, is that talking about the law has been covered for talking about the business itself. And so I think sending it back to committee is the best idea, plus, I'd like to know more, and since I've just joined, I'd like to have some time to really think about it and be able to make a reasonable decision.
Fair enough. Yes?
As you know, last time I brought up the thing about the size of the place. It's not a big deal. I think it's a good thing to have it. I'm really for it. I'm really interested to be one of the persons who will be in the club. But the side represents the finding community, there are so many people out there that they are worried about the close to the school. Nobody's against to have guns. Nobody's against to have anything. The only problem that they have, everybody, they, they ask me, do they think about the 3,000 students, parents, and the people around? Or is it gonna be the decision to take for only few? And they're gonna speak, oh, how, how does this work? Do this go in vote? Everybody can vote, like, you know? If they are, just to say a number, 10,000 people in Kingston, will we gonna, will we gonna take, pay attention to everybody? Or is it gonna be used for few to take the vote and change laws? Or do, you know, put a business in certain places? People is just concerned about safety, close to school, close to the wire. One of the things that people came up to, they told me that the guns are really good, and they love it. But one gun, or one rifle, or whatever, in the wrong hands, you make a big difference. One of the things a few weeks ago, you probably everybody know, a few weeks, weeks ago.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, like, I mean, this is, this is the forum to start. I mean, we could go with the gun for six hours. But this, this, that's what this, this, where this is what this council is for.
Yeah, I understand. Just two seconds, please. About six, seven weeks ago, one kid said that he was gonna bring a gun into school. And at least 30% of the kids didn't show up to school. And a lot of people, the kids didn't went to school for that reason. I'm not saying it's a bad thing to have a shooting range. I just said that we should pay attention to everybody around, or at least make a vote.
Like that? But I mean, that's a, I mean, that, that's, to me, that doesn't, that's a nice, I mean, that has nothing to do with the shooting range, is that?
No, it, it, it's just.
There's guns, there's guns in Kingston, period. I mean, you know, we know that. And they're legal ones, and there's people, dangerous people that are carrying them right now, so. I, I don't think this has anything to do with that.
Bill, I, I think, I think it's pretty clear this needs to go back to committee.
Yeah, I mean, that, yeah, let's get back to that. Because there's gonna be ample time to, to go back and forth on, on, on the issue, but, is everyone in favor of that? Will everyone go for that, go after committee? Everyone's good on that?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, okay. 1-0 and everyone else?
I'll be.
More cues.
Right. Which adds, which adds another. Thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Doctor.
Anyways, can we go in order now? For everyone else?
Thank you.
Now, that's, that was a good point. And 121 got pulled, I believe, right? 121, was that a scrap?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
But I think the New West Loop, yes, tonight I can pick one.
What's that?
The New West Loop, yes, with Vine, I think. That was 121, so you don't have to remember.
Oh, no, I got it.
Talk to Jan and tomorrow.
Okay. All right, so, we're back to the, back to the top now. 111 and 112 were city properties that were, were sold. Finance committee agreed to sell them. It looks like a couple of win-win situations here. Does anyone have any questions?
I think they were pretty clear. You know, we had a group, particularly for 3 Gardens Street. We have three people here.
Yes.
And it was close. We had a close vote on that, and, you know. But, we liked it to, to, let it go to Mount in Heights, it was a small, very small mountain. It was a thousand dollars more.
No, that was probably a hundred dollars. Oh. No, it was very small.
He's talking about Garden Street, Furniture.
Yeah, on top of Garden Street, yes.
It was a $5,000 difference.
$5,000.
Yeah.
$5,000.
But again, the residents and it's, you know, both, well, the one on Furniture Street, the gentleman's gonna fix that up and had a good reputation. And it seemed like a lot of people in the committee knew, knew him and his work, so. Any issues with those? I mean, I think they're pretty, pretty much no brainers. We're good on those?
Just looking for the solid.
Ian, you're grinning over there, okay. 111 and 112?
I think 111 had come back before, right? I think it was, or 112.
Yes, the second time. The lady said she was gonna do it six months.
Yeah.
Two years, we more like, I think, like.
Wait, what address is that?
94.
94 Furniture.
Is that, is that the, um?
It's the frame building, isn't it, you know where?
The house? The house?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I, I have some information on it. Let me give you that back. Can I? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I was given some information just today. Actually, at one of the meetings last week, I was, someone spoke to me, Trains aren't your topic, right? I wanna make sure.
No, 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 that's Henry Street.
Okay.
No, 94 Furniture.
I'm sorry.
That's the one that McDowell got, $4,000.
Oh, McDowell? Oh, God, sorry.
That'll be for the next one, Ian. You're taking a close pick. We'll be waiting for that now. Trains are, we gotta.
We can hit George Berkeley now.
That would be a whole one.
Okay, 113 is the, or I just have a question on the last one. Yeah.
Now, I see on the, on the committee report and everything, there's no mention of a reverter clause. Are we not putting any reverter clause for sales of city-owned properties? Time for him to get them back, you know, for a CLO, back on the tax rolls, you know, things like that, without paying taxes. But we always sell, when we sell property, we have a reverter clause. If they don't complete the improvements by a certain time, then the city can take the property back.
Garden Street is taken over by a family.
Yes. So, so they have a CLO then, Kevin?
I don't know if there's one at this place, but I, from the, the bond that I got from everyone, it, it wasn't as big a concern. It's not like you had someone who wasn't gonna be living in there, and wasn't gonna be active.
But I mean, just to protect the residents of this, and the neighborhood, we've always put that in there just to, you know, when they come to talk.
I don't believe that there was one in either one.
No, Jim, they were sold really for any and all lawful purposes? And if they get a building permitted, it has to be followed through? And if they don't follow through on that, then it reverts back, okay?
I don't, but he's saying that, that.
But you need, you have the timeframe to do it.
It doesn't have.
If we're out of time here, and they could never go for the building permit, and it could just fall down, and it's all, you know?
But if you get the permit, and the permitted spells out what you're gonna do and how long it's gonna take.
Yeah, but they might not get a permit.
Or, well, they have to, okay?
Why? There's nothing to make.
And why would we change the process that Jim's bringing up? We've been doing reverter clauses since.
I know.
Reverter clause is if you don't do what you say you're gonna do.
Correct. And 43 Garden Street was sold before and came back to the city.
43 Garden Street is really a minor renovations, family of six, okay? And they took it because they know what to do and so forth, okay?
But it was sold previously. And it came back to the city. And it's being sold again. On a reverter.
Okay.
Well, that would, that wouldn't be, I mean, that wouldn't change the deal, right, Kevin? If we added a reverter.
I mean, if, if the requirements weren't, weren't met, then yes, the city could acquire it back.
No, what I'm saying, let's start, if we added that to the, to the sale, once this is approved, I mean, there, it's not like they're gonna say, well, no, we don't wanna do it now. I mean, obviously, they're, they're still, they still, they want the house. I mean, you could see, they, it was, it was gonna be their home, so.
I mean, Doug, when they come to USN, like, what are you gonna do with the property? And do they say, well, we're gonna fix it up, or whatever? Do you say, well, how much money?
Oh, wait, we have, we have them right here.
Yeah, I'm here for that.
Oh, okay.
I just wanna know, I, I, I didn't know you guys were gonna bring this up. So I'm just here to know what's going on. I'm waiting, Barbara. We're waiting.
Yeah, you're the one that, you're the one that.
For Garden Street.
Oh, okay, so you're the one that's, okay.
So do you, are you living in there now? Do you have a CLO?
No, 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 no.
You have to do work to live in it?
Yeah, I do work with it.
Uh, yeah, the front, I think inside, it's, it's a little bit, but, I think it's, it's, it's good. It's in good, I mean, it's not like 100%.
I mean, if, if the city inspector comes to your house and says, "Okay, I don't see any violations. You can move in." Says that, will that happen, or will he come and say, "Uh, outlets are bad," or, you know?
No, no, they're all the, I think it's ready for, for people to move in.
So when we said on there, you have a year to get a CLO, certificate of occupancy, so you could move in? That would be okay with you?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think they wanna.
Yeah, well, I, I want it as soon as possible.
Well, you don't have to wait a year. You can get it tomorrow, if you want, but I mean, at least a year.
Yeah, can we do that then, and just add the reverter clause?
Well, I don't know if you necessarily wanna give him the, the impression that it could be that long a period of time.
What are you, what are you?
Well, that's a normal movie, Tom and Mike.
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
It's normally a year?
Yeah.
A year for what?
Mira's good job, eh? They're talking about two different things.
I know, I'm just, uh.
But I think, but I think. Basically, they're, they're talking about, before they actually make this, make this a valid deal, the president is asking if, if our council will put in a clause that says, "You have to fix it within a certain amount of time." That's what they're talking about. They're not talking about if you can or cannot have it. They're just talking about putting this clause in to ensure that you don't just get, get it and sit us, and just not do work.
No.
Okay.
I'm, I'm not gonna buy the house just to live it the way it is. No, that's impossible.
But, but this clause, they wanna have this clause put in, which protects the city so that life happens. Let's say something happens and you don't get to do it. All this basically does is guarantees us that you're gonna do it within a certain amount of time.
Well, I.
And all you have to do is be able to pass inspection, so you could move in.
I know it's really passing inspection. I, I already went inside, and the, the house, it's, it's good.
It's livable, right?
It's, oh, yeah, it's true. Only, only the, the front, and it's a little end, but.
The most important thing that you need to understand is.
We don't wanna run the tax roll.
They won't, they won't, hold on, cap, cap, go ahead. The most important thing you need to understand is that if you don't have a certificate of occupancy by a specific date, the city would have the right to take the property back from you. Just, just making sure you understand that.
But it sounds like he could get one right away.
Okay, but, yeah, it sounds like, he's giving me the impression he can, but you know what? He needs to at least have this knowledge.
Understand. So, but if it's livable now, right?
And it shouldn't be a problem.
Then there shouldn't, it's just a reverter.
The house, it needs to be cut out.
Well, they're, they're saying that it needs to be in with every transaction.
Right.
Which he doesn't have a policy, though, right? The red thing?
That's, that's.
Yeah, I know.
Generations have covered thing.
Uh-huh.
It's a lawful purpose.
It'll be.
Hold up, hold up, one minute, sorry.
It could provide, because it sits up here, like, you say. That's it?
Okay.
All right.
He understands, I, I just.
All right, Randy, go ahead.
My concern would be, we don't put it in, in one, and it sets precedent. And somebody else might come along, demand, and say, here's this precedent.
Because we've always.
They can sit on having a building for five years.
Can we do that then, at this point, and the reverter clause?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's make an amendment. Yeah, does someone wanna make an amendment on the floor, just to add the reverter clause? Anyone, Doug? Okay?
Yeah, we do it for, for every property itself.
Yeah.
Where it was not a reverter.
Yeah.
Property, you don't have to.
Specifically mention that.
Once that abstracts off, I can do that.
But we're gonna contact Joe McDowell to let him know if there's gonna be a reverter clause.
Don't, he, he does know. He's part of the property, so he does know. He does know.
But it doesn't say on it.
No, but he was, he was right there.
And if there is one year, the usual reverter.
No, you're right, somebody, if someone knows them, they should probably ask them more time. Normally. Yeah, okay, yeah.
They'll, they'll usually know, because they, that's the building, they're putting an offer in. They know how much money they're gonna have to spend to do it. They know how much time it's gonna take them to do it. And if they need more than a year, they can usually tell you. Or else they'll just buy and say, yeah, I just bought it because it was so cheap, and I'm not, not.
Yeah, if we add it, we'll be fine.
And then, then.
We'll make an amendment tomorrow, that, that reverter clause, the one-year reverter clause, incorporated in the.
Pieces, we got time. So, go ahead.
If you take the property back, do you pay him back his money?
No, he forfeited. I thought. Not gonna happen.
Okay, so we're good on that?
Yeah.
All right, you said, life happens.
It's not gonna happen.
Like you said.
We're gonna put the clause in, are you a carpenter, Scott? I'm sorry for speaking in French. Are you a carpenter?
Uh, I'm not a, I don't, I only was a carpenter, but I know I do this.
You got trade, okay. I got it. I got it.
Well, as long as you know how to build it, so pass inspection.
No, the house don't need anything inside to pass inspection. I mean, somebody, inspector can come into the house right now.
Well, they have to, a city inspector. Okay, just making clear, it'd be a, it'd be a city official.
Okay, next, next resolution, 114 out of finance. Doug, so where are you gonna start spending this money?
We just made any nerve.
Just one last thing. Is, is this a done deal, or is like?
Tomorrow night, we vote on it. Vote, vote.
Oh, you are.
We have a consensus here that that, tomorrow night.
I just wanted to know, if not, I can go.
You're good, you're good.
All right?
Yeah, we're gonna be neighbors soon, yeah.
Okay, thank you, guys. I'll go tonight.
Okay, 113 is revision to, from, by Ryan Holton's presentation on revised procurement policy to be in, in alignment with state, state regulations and, yeah, I'll see pretty.
Yeah, he did a great job, he was explaining it, and it was very.
Well, he did it in committee.
Yep.
Under duress.
Under duress. Does it matter for whereas? Does matter, whereas is misspelled? Is whereas a misspelled? Yes, it's the second one.
No, that's not me, that's his chat here. That's Kevin. I can't read his department. I will.
We will, yes.
The Cooks office had no resolutions this one.
Hey, so, number 114 involves the continuing operations on Washington Avenue. We can take it over meaning now? 114 is out of finance, Doug, go ahead. That just wanted, that just wanted director.
I knew you were gonna call.
Go ahead.
The continuing operations on Washington Avenue, unanticipated expenses as a result of the problem with the grouting appearing and so forth. And so there's a additional five, quite a bit of money, $575,000. That, for construction oversight, and bypass pumping cost, and various cost overruns, which are in progress, yeah. Finishing the street and so forth, and further unanticipated costs, and, you know, the big one is unpaid invoices for emergency invoices by grand street construction. But I think, I don't think anyone had a problem with these.
Oh, pass out committee, I mean, it's, it's painful, but pass out a committee, yes, there it is.
Was insurance looked into from GEA to cover any of the costs for their?
I, I thought Ralph said that there were a couple of things that there were, we might look to reclaim, but, again, that's gonna be a process to see where.
Would anybody follow, because I wasn't anticipating.
I, I talked about yesterday, and I gave him something I needed to have, and he got 2000, so, what? The reason I really talked to him is because we tabled completing the job, so. I don't, I don't know how we can not complete it. I mean, it's like a million too.
Right, oh, I agree.
But five years, you're just gonna let it sit there, because there's nothing can be built, at least for five years. So, I mean, we have all the prices and the numbers and everything.
And he said, he said it's gonna be done by June, too.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, I'm not going against him, just asking him.
No, but there's nothing now to move this along, because I don't have anything to put in committee. So we're just trying to bring it up now, so we can get a consensus, or I don't see that. You know what I mean? I mean, if nobody sent anything, and I don't think Ralph sent anything. We have the point of communication, so if there's nothing, you know, talking about that issue, who's gonna come back and talk to you about, well, the pump that was, that's running now, that'll cost us $30,000 a year to run, I can buy one for $150,000 or something, but, I mean, that's still not gonna solve the problem. You know what I mean? So, you're gonna have to think about that, and I, I would recommend just, but, you know, there's always.
So, did, is he gonna send a communications? He didn't?
No, he didn't.
So, can it be considered?
Because he doesn't know what to do. He says, well, they wouldn't, they didn't want me to do, they wanted to alternative, and I don't know what to do, and.
So can it be considered as old business to put on next?
Yeah.
That finance agenda?
Yeah.
I don't think we told not to, we were just.
No, you're not an alternative.
Yeah, right. Plan B, if Plan A didn't work.
Build a pump station, vending lines, things like that.
I mean, go forward, but, but always have Plan B, because Plan A doesn't, is not always working.
We're working on 180-foot sections. We're gonna complete that, hopefully. Maybe see if there's some things that were wrong with the process at the time that this was done. Because I still can't get through that this happened, if everything was done correctly. So that will still happen, but we still need to.
Oh, I get what you're saying, but she's also saying, that was a great question, that maybe this company had insurance if they did something wrong, or we have some kind of.
Well, you have to prove that.
We have to prove that.
But I think that, yeah, that's, that's down the road.
I know, I was gonna say, it's down the road.
But that did come up.
That did come up.
Because that, you know.
That's how cautious, did you say he was gonna talk to you?
It's a lot.
We're, we're looking into the matter.
So. But anyway, so, is everyone good on that?
Mm-hmm.
And then we got 115 and 116 related to that, authorizing the bond, and then the actual bond issuance.
115 needs six votes.
Right, right, we need, we need three-quarters of the vote on, on that one. You don't have to recuse yourself.
Two-thirds.
So we need six yeses, is everyone, we have six? All yeses, raise your hand on the bond, see if we're gonna get it through. Okay. Looks like we got it. Now we're spending even more money.
I know.
Long-awaited Broadway, Grand Street, Prince Street, Bedlam section. What's the next one? 119, 1.9, Doug, you wanna?
1.9, 1.9, right. Design of the sewer separation project, and, uh, bits of it received, and, you know, it is what it is. It's a May 8.
Was that the only bid we got? Hmm? Was that the only bid we received?
I think that was the last.
That was the low.
The low bid?
Yeah. Yeah, the low bid always is, 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 is come back for more money. I said the exact same thing, like, whoa, this is like, coming back. Like, I know it's not on the table tonight, but the Andy Murphy said, I mean, he came back with $300,000. Now they want triple that, or double that. It's like they give in, and the bigger they give, the less money out of the city council. I just.
That's, that's a big problem.
The high bid would do the same thing.
What's that?
The high is gonna do the same thing.
Yeah, right.
They'd be higher, right? For money, too.
Yeah, that's probably true.
But we've never experienced that.
Actually, that was brought up, that, you know, like, leave New York State law states that we have to take the lowest bid, right? The company.
I thought they had to qualify.
Qualified bidders.
But now I think that new policy you just passed allows you to alter the lowest bidder, but I, I don't know what the, the limit is.
The competitive bidding.
See, so that allows you to do it, but, you know, so maybe when we get that, we have some options. But right now, we don't have any options.
Because that was brought up, like, yeah.
But this has always been a problem, you know, so that corridor will probably be in some tough shape for a while. You have all this going on, Broadway, Grand Street.
Yeah, but.
Then you have the bridge.
The bridge.
Then you'll have Valley, yeah, with Jacob's Valley right there. So that whole area.
And you put two businesses in that or whatever.
And you'll have street collapsing and.
I think, I think.
But there'll be a new San Antonio line, so.
You have to repay them to do that.
So just don't travel Broadway.
Yeah, no.
Please come on my street, I recognize our passport as it is.
And again, these were issues long before any of us got here. And I think of our asset management where we're starting to look forward to this stuff. At least we put in something in place that, you know, well, we're along the line, the people aren't going to have to take bribes. And, you know, we.
Yeah, it's whenever they catch up.
Yeah, it'll be the same one, yeah, they're going to have the, yeah, they're going to have the exact same problem. Now, yes, we, well, we'll get there. The best underground in any.
We should have underground city children.
Again, the. Again, that's the, 119 is the actual bond again. Yeah, we need two thirds going on that. Is everyone good with that? Right, everyone good? Yeah, yeah. What? You don't want to hear what the public tells you. That's it, the only other one we have is the one that was just passed out of finance tonight. It was a finance meeting before it started, so Doug, you want to just briefly talk about that again?
Also about the second to last local law number two.
The local law number two, we still have to do, yes. I might got that, I'll get there.
The one that we just passed out of committee today, which is resolution 116, right?
Best value.
No.
Yeah, we got, oh, yeah, did we have the, remember, was that?
It's actually going to be number 121 tomorrow, I was, I was informed. I got an inside information.
Okay, yeah, in finance committee, 6:30, now we authorize the finance committee voted to transfer $14,000. Four budget items into, to buy a lowboy and a tractor trailer truck that's on sale from the county. We picked up such a good deal. I mean, there's, there's some questions, but, you know, we don't want to let it get away from us, so it seems like a reasonable.
All right, everyone good with that?
You know why?
Finance was good, I'm good with it. Okay, and then we have local law number two, which is the best value competitive bidding. And Brian Crawford, at length, about, about this one. Basically enables us to become part, part of a group or get better, better prices on bidding, is that the?
Right, you don't have to take the lawsuit either. You have a little more flexibility, a little more on that list and, you know, submit a base bet.
Yeah, so. Is everyone good on, uh, local law two? Kevin, it'll be our first reading also, we need two readings of it, so this will pass in June. Good, anything else? Any comments, commentary?
Well, I just have one thing I was going to just bring up. You know what? We have all these liaisons and everything to different committees and commission and all that stuff. But we really never get any reports back. So it was my intention to possibly have it, talk this night, that we could have a part in there for a report of liaisons. And everybody could give a little report on the group that they're a liaison to. That way everybody would get information on what's going on pretty much broadly across the city and planning, lending and all of that.
I bring that transmission.
Well, I'm not saying everybody doesn't do it, I'm just saying.
I'm just saying, I don't have the other one, but I bring that to Greece.
Yeah, I think that's a good, Tony?
The only thing is with, like, the fire board, it's, it meets like three, it usually meet at three o'clock. And then that is impossible.
And, and I'm not holding, I'm not holding everybody.
Yeah, if you don't have anything, else you do have some.
And then it becomes an issue where you feel you can't do it for me, but I can make some adjustments against somebody that thinks.
You're saying you're the easy one.
We have to get married.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
It's reasonable, it's in the GBA league.
So just let me know if you feel that.
All right, Doug, that's, that's something.
I just have one, one issue for me. I mean, I try to make this amazing, I can't, but the CBA week is the same night as law and rules. So I usually try to hop, half hour here and less than time. There's nothing going on in law and rules. I mean, he's a listening, that's for sure. I can use, you talk to Tony. I got, yeah, and he knows.
Do I need to make a license card? Here's some extra visitor guides, anyone want?
Yeah, Phil, let me have those. A new neighbor.
You still here? I have, I have, thanks. I take them out of the way, I have to, all right, so somebody else.